Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our August 10, 2021 special city council meeting. It is 7:13. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Tracy Johnson from Murph Chapel Street, Paul AME Church, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise. Oh, Tracy's not here? Oh, we'll have our city manager, Dave Cármeni.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for all these blessings you've given us tonight. Privilege of self-governance, that we exhibit wisdom and patience and kindness this evening. Yes, these things, in Jesus' name.
The right hand over your heart. Ready? Again.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabatabai.
Present.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Diaz is absent. Mayor Protim Costalanos.
Here.
Mayor López Viado.
Present. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
So, tonight, we have no presentation this evening, so we will begin oral communication. Just wanted to let everybody know that tonight is a special meeting, so public comments must reflect items that are on the agenda. Next week, we'll have our regular meeting, but if you have public comments in reference for tonight's special meeting, go ahead and please submit it to our Assistant City Clerk.
Mayor, at this time, I have no comments.
No public comments. All right. Well, there's nothing to respond to, so for... Do we still have our city manager's report? No? Do you?
We can, if you like.
Sure. Go ahead.
If I may. We just wanted to highlight a couple things. A number of us were in attendance at the National Night Out. It was especially pleasant to be out among people that are in communication with our community, our party members, and be in the neighborhood. It was a special night. Thanks to all who participated, who hosted, and who were present. Beginning to bring things back, this is some pictures of our concerts. Wish we could do more of our future group stuff. Wanted to mention some things that are beginning to open up in your center. We are asking that people who are registered, that night, and that of jazz, Magic Person, Magic Castle, also back, in case they're registered ahead. A lot of excursions and walk trips. I remember at Tabazon, at the Vegas Theater, that will have to bring proof of COVID vaccination or if they tested negative. There's a lot of things that are brought back. Sportsplex is also open on a reservation basis for people to sign up. Many of the baseball tournaments that are in the weekend. Information about the... I have the meeting just about that, for those that are interested, August 18 at the Sportsplex at 6:00. And John Carapino is taking on the lead role for handling the rentals. And John's email is available on our website.
City Manager, you might have to repeat yourself again. You have no mic.
I've been accused of that. Yeah. Got a big audience tonight.
The people at home.
Oh, thank you. The Sportsplex is open on a reservation basis. We want to get people in there to begin to use the facility on a reservation basis. They can contact John Carapino. For groups that are interested, we're going to have a meeting on August 18 at the Sportsplex at 6:00, and John will be leading that effort for us. Next slide. Wanted to make mention of the fact that COVID-19 testing is still available Tuesday through Sunday at the Senior Center. The website is updated to reflect this information. You're welcome to make a reservation, but frankly, walk-ins are entirely welcome. The staff there is friendly. I can vouch for that personally. And if anybody has any questions about their personal health and wonders if it's COVID, it's a free test, and we encourage people to go to the Senior Center and get it. Just wanted to highlight some of the work that our own city force account crews are doing at the Senior Center. They were concreting in the former bocce ball to avoid trip and falls, and they've done a nice job with that work. The finishing looks good. And I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
And the city manager, excuse me, since you're not on the mic, can you repeat the senior service again, so people at home can know what kind of service they have with your mic?
Can we rewind to the events about the senior, please? Paulina? Okay, here we go. We just wanted to announce that we're beginning to open up the Senior Center for the people that want to avail themselves of those activities. We've got a lot of things. There are free events coming up. There's a paint night. There's a night of jazz. There's a person from the Magic Castle together with an ice truck that night. They've got a Welcome Back Boogie with DJ Phil Friday the 3rd. Pre-registration is required. We're asking people to wear masks indoors, but they can call us there at 626-331-5366 to register in advance, please. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to see everything is kind of going back to normalcy and allowing the... Especially the seniors. I know that they mentioned that they really appreciated coming back. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Do I have a motion? Items 1 and 2.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Costalanos and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilwoman... Excuse me. Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz is absent. Mayor Protim Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor López Viado?
Aye. Motion passes for 0. Onto public hearing. Let's see. Item number 3 for the fiscal year 2021-2022 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Action Plan. This matter set for public hearing is a consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Action Plan. City Clerk, can you verify the proper legal notice that it has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I shall open the public hearing on this proposed action plan. Mr. Cármeni, who will present the staff report?
This report, Mayor and Council, will be given by Kelly McDonald. I was teasing him on the way in. It's Kelly McDonald night at City Council, so he's going to lead us through these two required CDBG hearings.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. This hearing concerns the fiscal year 2021-2022 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Action Plan. Now, the city receives an annual grant of CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The program works to ensure decent, affordable housing, to provide services for the most vulnerable in our communities, and to create jobs through expansion and retention of businesses. As a recipient of the funds, the city is required to prepare an annual action plan that guides the intended use of the grant funds for the program year. In recent years, the city's used CDBG funds for such activities as the Senior Meals Program, Business Assistance Loan Program, Housing Preservation Program, capital projects, and public services such as food banks and homeless services. The action plan development process requires two public hearings. On April 6, the City Council approved the 2020-2024 CDBG Consolidated Plan and included the prioritization of community needs shown in Table 1. The categories are more fully described in Attachment 1. On May 4, in the pre-development hearing, the City Council affirmed this prioritization of community needs and directed staff to draft the 21-22 Action Plan accordingly. The proposed action plan is included as Attachment 2. Table 2 shows the one-year action plan budget. This year, the city will receive approximately $828,000 in CDBG funds. Staff estimates an additional $40,000 in program income received through loan repayments to the Housing Preservation Program. And the balance will be made up through the reprogramming of funds from prior-year projects that are proposed to be canceled, as well as unobligated funds from prior years. The proposed amendments described in Table 3 consist of canceling three... Or, I'm sorry, four previously approved activities and reprogramming the funds associated with the programs. It's the Ramp Program, ADA Compliance at Public Facilities, a Senior Center Door Replacement, and the Care Ship, which is a public service program. Funded would be reprogrammed to a residential street improvement project. Table 4 summarizes the proposed reprogramming of funds between two activities. Through the proposed amendments described in Table 4, $250,000 will be reprogrammed from the Business Assistance Program to the Housing Preservation Program. This proposal is based on past and anticipated program demand. Table 5 shows the 21-22 Action Plan funding, including unexpendited balances and activities that have been carried forward. Activities with carried-over budgets are designated with an asterisk in the table. The city published a notice of funding availability in May and received 10 funding requests totaling $195,000 from public service providers serving West Covina. Attachment 3 describes the applicants and the services. To avoid impact of the general fund, staff earmarked status quo funding for city-administered projects, which are designated with a double asterisk. A decrease in CDBG funding to these programs would result in increased burden to the general fund to maintain the current service levels. Staff also recommended status quo funding for the Housing Rights Center. As a CDBG sub-recipient, HUD requires grantees to provide services that promote and support fair housing in the community. Funding the Housing Rights Center addresses this HUD requirement. So, staff recommends funding the projects 8 through 12, as shown in Table 5. The balance of the public service applicants were evaluated by the CDBG Ad Hoc Committee of the Community and Senior Services Commission. The ad hoc committee evaluated applications and heard presentations, asked questions of the applicants, and recommended funding for projects 13, 15, and 18 for consideration by the City Council. Projects 14, 16, and 18, which are denoted with a triple asterisk in the table, were not recommended for regular CDBG funding. These providers received CDBG COVID funding from the city when the first round of CARES Act funds were received. Now, because the allocation made for food banks has a balance sufficient to meet the funding request, it's a recommendation of the ad hoc committee that these three providers be funded with the previously allocated CDBG COVID funds. Notice for the hearing was published on July 2, and the draft was available for a 30-day review as required. No comments have been received. City Council may approve the staff's recommendation or provide alternative direction, and it's the staff's recommendation that the City Council approve the fiscal year 2021-2022 CDBG Action Plan and the accompanying budget amendment. That concludes my report, and happy to answer questions.
Any questions from City Council?
We... Sorry?
Well, no, then I'll... I just questions first. If not, then I'll open it up to the... Anybody who wish to present, the public on this item? Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
Mayor, the Clerk's office received no communication on this item, either in favor or opposed.
Okay. I shall now close the public comment portion of this hearing and ask for council discussion.
I have a question.
Councilman Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. The concern I have, continue, is the housing for the seniors, okay, or fixed income for CDBG fund to, okay, improve the, okay, energy saving. We, okay, West Covina has a lot of old homes. Those homes, being 1950, 1989, I purchased my first home. Okay? Kelly? Are you listening?
I'm sorry. We're pulling up a slide to address the questions, sir. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just about, okay, the housing owner occupy, okay, and the CDBG fund to help the, okay, fixed income and senior, because West Covina has a lot of old homes. 1989, I purchased my first house. I lived there 14 years. There has no air conditioning, single panel, no insulation. And we have a lot of that kind of housing in West Covina. So, how can we help those senior and fixed income? Okay, every year, I ask the same question. Can we increase the $10,000 to $20,000? Okay? Because right now, everything's very expensive, so can we increase the CDBG fund to assist people to apply to improve their, okay, insulation or air condition? Especially air condition, okay? Right now, with this kind of weather, with that kind of, okay, home is very... It's extremely unbearable. It's like oven. I live in 14 years, but luckily, I have a swimming pool, so it's too hot, jumping into the pool. But other than that, for the people don't have a pool, then they got a problem, especially for the senior, or it's not healthy. So, can we increase the CDBG fund for the people to apply and promote to our resident that can apply this? Okay, why not $10,000, right?
That's correct.
So, can we?
Yes, we can.
Increase to $20,000 to possible help them to kind of install air condition or insulation or change into double panel window? So, upgrade their living standard?
Currently...
Yes.
All right. Currently, they are able to use the $10,000 loan towards replacement of windows, anything exterior. We can look at amending the program guidelines to add additional improvements that would qualify with the loan, and we can look at increasing the loan amount from $10,000 to $20,000.
Do we have a cap? So, can we go even higher to... So, do we... It's like, we only allow for $1 million a year, or we only allow $500,000? Do we have a cap of the fund we can utilize? Because since we have thousands, thousands of this kind of home, and a lot of people don't even know, okay, we have this program, so we need to kind of help them to understand they can apply through the CDBG fund to home improvement.
Right. There's no cap on?
No cap? We can go to $20,000, $30,000 per household? Do we have any requirement?
I'm sorry. Are you speaking to the loan amount?
No, I'm talking about if we don't have a requirement, we have this budget fund, the hard, the CDBG fund, so in that way, why not $10,000? Can we increase to $20,000 or $30,000? Because air condition won't be cheap. And the window is not cheap either. Insulation, of course, nice. It's very expensive. So, if you want to increase, improve these three, it will cost a lot of money, and a lot of people doesn't have this kind of fund in the bank.
So, the program does require qualification based on income, so that's something that we do have to take a look at. We can look at the guidelines and changing. Right now, it's a deferred loan for 10 years. It's a 30-year loan with 10 years, no interest, no repayment. After that, it's 5% simple interest, so we can look at the guidelines and amending that. If we increase the amount, we want to make sure that it's not going to be a burden for someone on year 11 that they can't make the payment.
Exactly. And it's for owner occupied only, right?
Correct. Owner occupied, and they have to meet the income requirement.
Meaning, the senior or the fixed income, they own their home, and they need some kind of assist to improve their living standard of their house, because we have a lot of old homes. So, we can even go higher than $20,000 per unit?
I would like to look at the numbers and make sure that if we do a deferred loan, that it wouldn't place a huge burden on the homeowner, you know? When the loan becomes due, maybe there's another option to... And how to structure that loan.
Okay. Another thing, I want to make sure, okay, we have a, okay, streamlined process for people to apply, because last time, we want people to apply for the Business Assist Program, and it's only one person qualified. So, it's really sad. So, we want to make sure we have a streamlined, we have this funding, so people can utilize.
This is a lot simpler process.
Much simpler. Okay? So...
This one is easy. I know residents who have utilized the program, where they built an AC unit, brand-new AC unit, with insulation. I didn't... I don't think they met the $10,000. It was like $8,500. Well, that's a few years ago.
Oh, that is pretty good.
Yeah.
You have to find the contractor.
I know. But everything is... They didn't have a complaint, but I know back in the days, the rule was they didn't have to pay back unless they refinance or sold their house. Now, that does worry me if it's a 10-year mark, and they're already low income, and then 10-year hits, and they have to pay back, they won't have the money. So, that's the only concern I have. I don't know, why did they make that change? Was there a reason why they changed that rule? So, it was... Those were former redevelopment programs, so they used low-mod housing funds initially, and we still use some low-housing funds for our current program, but that program was for, I believe, a different bracket of income individuals, and it was based on, within 10 years, if you didn't refinance, if you still lived in the home, then you didn't have to repay it back, but upon one of those things happening.
After 10 years, can we then, okay, if they still, and they still qualify, can they extend it for another 10 years? Or 10 years?
That's something we can definitely look at, redoing the guidelines for the program and seeing something that's going to work for, obviously, the city and also for the homeowners. Make sure, like you said, Mayor Leti López Viado, that it doesn't become a huge burden when the loan becomes due, and it's something that they're not able to repay.
Madam Mayor, do you? I'm not that worried about that part of it, because of the time value and money. 10 years later, 10 grand's not that much. It's like 5 grand. But, I mean, we should...
For somebody home, you know, low income, that's a lot.
But the time value of money, you know, 10 grand today is not 10 grand 10 years from now.
Correct. We want to encourage people to apply.
There's, you know...
Upgrade their home.
I'm sorry. Okay.
So, do we need to amend this, or no? Okay, to change into $10,000 to, okay?
We'll return you after this.
Available funding that is based on their applications. For example, they apply AC window and insulation to possible $22,000. So, $2,000, okay, so more than the $20,000 we just talked, so we can give them, so not just cap, okay? So, in that way, we can encourage people, more people, to upgrade their home. Speaking to is good for the city, too. You know, nice home with upgrade, okay, update, not upgrade, update, living standard.
That's the purpose of the CDBG. It's a win-win for the city and a win-win for the resident.
Do they qualify for solar panels under this program, too?
I'd have to double-check. I'm not sure if solar qualifies.
Do you have a future, especially with blackouts? Maybe even batteries? I mean, you know...
I would double-check.
Okay.
Double-check, and we'll include whether it qualifies or not when we bring it back. It helps them save on electricity.
He's a Hank crank.
Any other questions? But in hand-in-hand with that, I know there are programs, I don't know if residents are aware, but if they are low income, they have the electric and gas where they can go at your house for free and then modify it so you can save energy. So, just wanted to bring that out. Other than that, so there's no other questions, no comments, no concerns? So, do I have?
I have the motion to approve.
There it is.
Okay, and amend, okay, the CDBG fund for owner occupied home improvement to the proper funding. I don't know, I don't want to put on $20,000, subject to the application. Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, through the chair. I'd like to return with those program guidelines, so you could look at them in black and white, side-by-side, the existing guidelines and what we think we heard you say tonight in terms of eligibility. It has to comply with some of the national objectives, elimination of slumps and blight or principally benefiting low and moderate income. Within that, we've got a lot of latitude. I'd like to return with those guidelines for you to review and approve.
So, we don't need to approve this right now?
Not that piece tonight, please.
Just that portion? Everything else?
Everything else will go.
Okay. So, Councilman Wu, a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Protim Costalanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor López Viado?
Aye. Motion passes.
There is a fourth item that was added. It was an amendment to your item, so on your desk, you have a packet that has the amended agenda as well as item number four in front of you.
Additional item?
Yes. So, this is the... For the community, CDBG?
Mayor, if I may introduce the item and try to explain. We learned at the very last minute, Kelly came into my office and explained that there was a potential of a grant just north of $700,000, if we could act by today's deadline to get, meet the HUD deadline. And I was only too happy to amend the agenda. I thought you'd feel the same way. But this is money, similar to the early money we got, where we partnered with Ultimate and did the COVID site. This is money that has to be used in keeping with those guidelines to address the COVID pandemic. But I'm going to let Kelly give a brief staff report and then ask you to take action, if that's okay.
Sure. With that being said, proper legal notice has been given, right?
Yes, Mayor. Proper legal notice was given.
Proceed.
Thank you. This hearing concerns a proposed amendment to the fiscal year 2019-2020 CDBG Action Plan. It's described in the previous hearing as a recipient of CDBG funds. The city is required to prepare an annual action plan. The proposed amendment is necessary to include an additional allocation of CDBG funds received through the CARES Act. The CARES Act was signed in April 2020 in response to COVID-19. It allocated $5 billion in CDBG CV funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. Funds are administered under CDBG guidelines. Attachment 1 is a quick guide to the eligible activities, and Attachment 2 describes the certain flexibilities of the funding, such as the elimination of a cap on public service funding. The city previously received an allocation of $473,000 in activities that were funded, as the city manager mentioned, was the partnership with Ultimate, food banks, and as well as meal preparation and delivery. City received an additional allocation of $709,000, for a total of $1.18 million. And in order to use these funds, the amendment to the 2019-2020 Action Plan is necessary. The proposed amendment consists of including the full amount of CDBG CV funding for public service activities to respond to COVID-19 challenges in the 2019-2020 Action Plan. Presently, there's no specific activity that's been identified. It's administrative action to allocate the funds and transmit the amendment to HUD. We would subsequently come back later with an amendment when we identify projects to the council for approval. We were, as the city manager mentioned, contacted late last week of pending deadlines, so we wanted to get this action before you. So, the hearing was noting compliance with HUD requirements for a CDBG CV, and it's recommended that the City Council approve the proposed amendment and related budget amendment. That concludes my report.
Good job, Kelly. Thank you. Is there any public comments who would like to address this?
Mayor, the city clerk's office received no comments in favor or opposition.
Okay. Do I have staff? Questions?
Sounds like a good deal. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Costalanos and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Costalanos?
Aye.
Mayor López Viado?
Aye. Motion passes for 0. That. Mayor, council member reports. Are there any reports to be given out? No? City Council request?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me the floor. I wanted to point out that in front of you, I provided a couple slides. On July 17, 2018, the City Council, in a 5-0 vote, adopted a West Covina Homeless Plan, which consisted of the four goals and 14 related actions with them. The adoption by the council called for, at a minimum, a yearly report on the plan's progress to the City Council by the Community Services Director. To date, since the adoption, there hasn't been a presentation on the plan's progress. And since the time of the adoption, there's been major changes in not only the law, but also the funding infrastructure regarding homeless. And so, on the second slide, in April of 2019, in Boise versus Martin, the Ninth Circuit ruled that as long as there is no option for sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize...
Councilmember Tabatabai, is there a mother may I request, a specific council request you'd like to make?
Right. Right, yeah, so the Mother May I request is that we, and I will go ahead and pull that up, is my Mother May I request is that the presentation of the city's progress towards these four goals and the 14 related actions of our homeless plan and next step recommendations, given the changes in the law and the funding infrastructure.
So the, I remember this year of March, we had a over two-hour presentation. We went over, I believe, Chief Bell, and we had county, we had, including the audit report from the state, we, to discuss everything, including a lot of these things that was brought up. What exactly is the request? Because we just had this whole presentation just this year.
So, Madam Mayor, the presentation by Lieutenant Daniels did not address the city's homeless plan. It did not address the four goals or the 14 actions or the progress towards those 14 actions. The homeless plan that was adopted by the city council 5-0 specifically said that a report to the city council, to this body, a minimum once a year regarding the progress to those 14 actions. I re-watched the March meeting and also corresponded with Lieutenant Daniels, who gave the presentation. And he was unaware of the, this homeless plan. And again, the homeless plan is very specific in that it is the community service department to deliver the report. And the report is to be on our progress towards the 14 actions. Included in that March report, there was no, in the staff report provided, our homeless plan was not part of that staff report either. And so, again, in July 2018, as a council 5-0, as a city, we adopted this homeless plan. It called for a yearly report. We still have not received it regarding those four goals and 14 actions. And all I'm asking is that we follow what the city council had voted on in 2018.
No, I understand, but obviously with a lot of issues that is occurring with the homeless situation, what I've noticed is that we're just getting bombarded with reports, reports, reports. If there's something specific you'd like to bring in, because to tell you the truth, a lot of the issues, you know, we discussed about Measure H, and a lot of the resources and everything is through county, and we're very limited on a few of those things. Is there a specific issues that you'd like to see? I mean, I prefer, I mean, we could have this report and it's going to be the same situation again. Is there specific things you'd like to see accomplished or?
Yes, so Madam Mayor, this was the reasoning for me, including the changes that have occurred. Because just, I believe, last week Senator Rubio, Senator Susan Rubio, brought to the San Gabriel Valley, the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust, $21 million for us to access. And again, this is why it's necessary for us to go through those four goals and the 14 actions, which included in goal four, rapid rehousing, in which this new $21 million. This is not county money. This is not Measure H money. This is money that Senator Rubio was able to get for the San Gabriel Valley specifically. And there's application process going on currently. My other concern and why I feel it's necessary for us to move forward is the city of Whittier and the city of Baldwin Park have recently built, in Whittier, they built shelter in the city of Baldwin Park. They're about to build a tiny village, which is on the border of West Covina. And they're about to, they're about to take over Hotel, which will allow them to meet the 60% requirement of beds. So then they can enforce their camping ordinances and move unsheltered people who do not want services to the surrounding communities. They'll be able to move them out of Baldwin Park. And so, as I spoke with one of the lawyers who was involved in the OC settlement, he said that cities that are not taking action are going to be hit with the tsunami of unsheltered people who refuse services. And we, because of Boise, are not going to have the ability to enforce our camping laws. Lieutenant Daniels in March?
Yes, I mean, let me, sorry to interrupt, but we know all of this. I mean, and here's the thing is, have you identified any land? Because as far as the hotel, if you recall Project Room Key, the backlash was gangster. So.
No, I.
I mean, so hotel, I think.
I understand.
I mean, and I get where you're going with it. I think that a lot of these, we must do something. But I think it's going to be more of a regional thing because like the little houses next door in BP. How many is it going to be? 30?
So the BP, the BP development will house up to 50 residents at a time. They are also.
Like 300?
The motel, the motel six that currently is being run by the county, which borders right here on Puente. They are looking to obtain those beds. And so, again, my Mother May I is the first step, right? So to go over what our action plans were. And so then we, as a council, can then take the next steps, give direction to staff.
Yeah, and I'm going to share some emails with you that I've communicated with the county earlier this year. All dead ends. I'll share those with you. So I've been working on this, try and try and try and Measure H is a fraud, it's a sham. We got taken to the cleaners. I mean, I, I'm with you. We got to do something on it, but I think we got to look there. I want to know more about the Senator Rubio 21 million. But I mean, in terms of, Mother May I, kind of hear you want us to focus on the 14 bullet points. But as far as like land, it's available for anything of this nature. Have you identified any? Because I've looked at our map with a fine-tooth comb driven around, and I haven't identified anywhere.
So this process is supposed to happen in the public forum. And it's the reason for the Mother May I. It's not really as a council member or council behind closed doors to make decisions. This is why we have the presentations. It's why in what was adopted by the city. And again, you know, this was a 5-0 vote by the city council. We adopted this plan. It is on our website. It is what we, at the time, said we would do as our response to homelessness. And again, there's nothing that I am requesting that is a new thing. This was something that the council gave direction to staff when they approved this homeless plan. And that's just an annual report on the progress of these 14 action plans, you know? And again, all of these issues that you're addressing and, you know, to share the emails with me, I understand that. But it's really, you know, the public that needs to be aware of, well, what are the emails? What are the steps we are taking? For instance, you know, the, well, I have the floor. For instance, the homeless plan addressed the fact that we were spending in 2018, $4.86 million from our general fund dealing with homeless.
Madam Mayor, before we get in, let's not get into a discussion. It's not on the agenda. We have the Mother May I. Let's take action on the Mother May I, please.
This Mother May I is not debating. This is wasting time to debate, okay? He just, Mother May I, and I still don't understand his Mother May I. He want a tiny home?
No, my Mother May I is that the community service department will report on the plan's progress on the four goals and 14 action plans based on our plan to prevent and combat homelessness that was adopted in 2018. It's just part of our plan.
Okay, a community service, okay, committee have a subcommittee as a homeless committee. And then, please, let me finish, okay? I'll be patiently waiting for your thing, okay? And please respect my time. Okay, my point is this, okay, we have a subcommittee of homeless in the community service, and they are trying to meet together and they have their agenda. So maybe you can have them to work with, okay, those, okay, and the committee to try to do something to about homeless and come out the solution and can bring that, okay? And my point is this, currently, okay, county took all our money. And even with the Senator Rubio, $21 million shared with San Gabriel already, 31 city, with a lot of red tape, this and that, we talk about this at the COB meeting, Council of Governments in Gabriel. Okay, so it's really not just like, okay, we can just buy to get the money. Same thing, you have a red tape, you have to build a tiny home. Where we build a tiny home, okay, in the District 1, District 5? Where's the land? Okay, and what, you want to study, report? And have you do a community outreach, talking to your neighbor, do they want the tiny home in their neighborhood, or where to put it? So you have to be more pinpoint about what you want to achieve, not to get another report, this and that. Report cheap, wasting the city staff time. We want to action, okay? Action is, I remember I talked to Hilda Solis, the supervisor District 1, our district supervisor, during the library with meeting with all the council, with all the city. I asked her, I say, is one thing is really working to help those homeless population is outreach. You, when you go to the encampment with county health, okay, department people, with our social worker, with our mental health from county, with, okay, and the union station, and our city, and our city staff, to, okay, our police, the two and a half, or the whole team. And we, they went to the audit encampment, and we helped 25 people, two times. Each time, we helped 25 people off the street. That is very successful, okay, and program. But they only did it five years, two times. I request, can we do this every six months? And the Hilda Solis said, no, we don't have money. But we gave them $60 million already. Why can't they do it every six months? Help those people find a resource. We city doesn't have the resource. We gave them the money, but county never give back to us. So I don't know if this study really can help. We just should request county give us a resource so we can help those homeless people.
Again, my Mother May I is based on the policy that the city council already approved 5-0, that called for a presentation on the four goals and the 14 actions. It was very specific.
I got it. It's understandable. Thank you. Actually, and I don't mind if you don't mind me amending it. Because I know on March of this year, I requested, and I don't know if the city even drafted a letter to the state, but I actually would like to add to that. There, I'd like to have the state declare an emergency on the homeless crisis. Because I know even with county, county has told us before, we don't have the money, even though they got state's money, they got the Measure H money, and they keep saying, if it's a state of emergency, they can utilize the FEMA money on that. But with that letter, not only the state of emergency, I'd like, you know, bring back the mental institution. And then I'd like them to utilize one system that they can connect with all agencies to see where the homeless, they get a better census of the homeless situation because we got homelessness coming from outside of the city. And then, so with that, including the Senator Rubio, 21 million for SGB. And also, just in case people don't know, LA City Council is preparing to withdraw from LASSA, the homeless authority. So if I can amend that with including these, and then of course, give us the update, because I already know how that update is going to be. It's just going to be another report. But I'd like to see action plan, then I am prone to move forward with that.
Madam Mayor, that's exactly what is called for in the homeless plan.
With what I'd like to request, my state, and yes, to be added to, continue with the state that I requested from the request.
So it's a substitute motion or?
Subject, yeah, it has to include like.
With your motion to Mother May I, to have city to look into the declared emergency?
Correct, because we approved on our last, this year of March, because of the state audit. I have to remind people, it is a state of emergency because state of California takes on half of the homeless population in the entire United States of America. And then LA County almost takes on half of California. So homelessness is in California. And obviously, their audit report stated, they're doing a horrible job. The counties that are, and they didn't even audit LA County, so imagine if they did. But they, state audit on homeless stated that it's doing a horrible job. So we'd like to push forward with that.
So you want to, okay, a substitute motion to?
Madam Mayor, if I may, it's not a substitute motion. You are amending the underlying motion. So it's not replacing Councilmember Tabatabai's motion. She's amending it.
Amending with what?
To add a letter to the state, yes.
To add.
So we have to get a report?
So it's almost like a joint? Is this considered a joint, Mother May I, or is this considered?
I really don't want to spend to the city.
No, I understand on a lot of.
I can support you, okay, about follow the March, the motion. But I really have a hard time with his, okay, Mother May I. So I really don't want to join, okay? You have your own, we can start with his motion, okay? And see, we have a second. And if you have yours, you can have yours. But if you combine together, I don't know how to vote. I really against what he want. He want to do possible tiny home, okay, and all that kind of thing. Because he been praising about Whittier and Baldwin Park, with less than 30 homeless, not realistic. Where we get the land?
Which, by the way, Whittier hasn't officially openly postponed.
So in that way, how can I, how can I support his motion, his Mother May I?
The, my motion is, my Mother May I is for a report on our four goals and the progress to the 14 actions in our homeless plan that was adopted in July of 2018. I called for an annual report. That was my.
Mine is.
In that action, when they developed this program, I don't know if it was a, could be a written report, or I don't know if it's a presentation, but maybe a written report.
I thought this report, wasn't this a report? Because I remember I was a community and senior service commissioner. And that was part of what we were doing as a community senior service.
In the homeless plan, it is a report to the city council.
But I'd like my amendment.
A written report or?
No, no, you can have your own.
I don't know what it is.
You can vote his first.
Okay, well, if it's just that, then.
Madam Mayor, I was just bringing, I was just suggesting it could be a written report. I didn't watch the action. I didn't watch the creation. This was before we were here, so if.
Oh, it's just a written report?
If it's a required presentation to the city council, is what I'm saying. If it's a written report, we can do the written report, if it's okay.
So his meant, his would be a written report?
I don't, I let.
No, that, okay, can we just make it simple? He has a Mother May I, we vote on that, okay, see, he can get three votes. And then we go to you, okay, Mother May I, and see, you can get three votes. I think that's very simple. You don't have to combine. Why you want to combine?
Do you ever the council like? It's to the discretion of the council, so, I mean, mine will, it's, yeah.
We go, we'll vote his first.
Go ahead. Is that a city attorney?
Madam Mayor, yes. So let's address Councilmember Tabatabai's request and see if we have three votes. And then.
Need a second.
If we don't, then we will address your request.
Do I have a second? So on my, well, the amendment, which includes.
No, your own.
Yeah, well, my request.
On the underlying motion from Councilmember Tabatabai, do you have a second?
No, do you have your own, Mother May I?
Well, I, so we have his, and I had no second, and I have mine.
Now yours.
Mine.
Are we going to vote yours?
A second on mine.
Can you repeat your motion?
Well, I want to make sure this is in conjunction with the March of this year that we had that long homeless presentation meeting in regarding to writing a letter to declare a state of emergency on the homeless crisis, with those two issues, bringing back the mental illness, I mean, mental institution, including the, utilizing the one agency, and to also give us a report on basically with, you know, the changes that is occurring and moving forward on, and then like to know, of course, the Senator, the 21 million for SGB, and how is that given to us?
Can I amend, Mother May I, to add, okay, last year, we have, January before the pandemic, we already have West Covina homeless initiative. And we want to consolidate, okay, all our services, including any nonprofit organization, okay, to add into what we can help those people. Because we can, we're not moving them around. We want to help them off the street. So I remember, okay, this is what we tried to do.
That's true. Last year, or the year before COVID, we pushed for this homeless initiative thing that we wanted, which pretty much, this planned progress changed and amended this whole thing with the initiative that we approved.
I want to add this into your Mother May I, to have the city to look into the consolidate all the nonprofit organization as our West Covina homeless initiative is similar to what we try to deal with. But at least we can consolidate, for example, like Face Church, they maybe have some program. Okay, like, okay, One and All, they have a lot of food bank program. So we can consolidate those programs and including some of they have a shelter. So we can consolidate in all different of, even nonprofit or mental health. I think we have one in our city, consolidate to, because if county continue waiting no money, but we have to help ourselves, so we use it a nonprofit. but we have to help ourselves, so we use the nonprofit to do it. So I add on your mother may I to put, continue to our West Covina homeless initiative, including about, okay, emergency to try to get some funding from some other places.
Yes, and in regards to that, the, in regards to the sheltering in place, I wanna also make sure that if it's included, if residents, if residents are allowed, cause you know how some of the residents have room for rent type of deal? If there's something in place, if they want to shelter the homeless, that they could do so, if that's, and hopefully increase our motel and vouchers, that's a big issue, but.
So the mother may I is to have city to look into all this, including the consolidate of the nonprofit?
I just wanna see action and the initiative is the action.
Okay, I second.
Roll call.
So I wanna be clear on the mother may I for purposes of the minutes. Mayor, you would like another letter sent to the state to include?
I don't know what, if you guys sent out a letter, I didn't see. I don't think a letter was sent out to the state, was it?
I believe it was, but I'll check.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that.
Okay.
So add to the letter information regarding to bring back mental institutions as well as a report on what changes have occurred since that report was given and how this $21 million is going to be used in the San Gabriel.
We can apply.
To apply, thank you.
That's for 31 city to share.
And an amendment was given to look at consolidating all of the homeless nonprofits and.
Consolidate all the service that provide nonprofit in our city, so we can consolidate. Rather than they fighting individually, we can consolidate.
And we also want to look at sheltering the homeless.
Right.
Okay.
And if it's possible for the state to declare the emergency for the homeless crisis.
An emergency.
Just get the.
Madam Mayor, and if I may add something, I think you made reference to this earlier. On February 11th, this was written, we received it sometime in February, I think you referenced Elaine Howell, this California state auditor, she sent us a letter, basically, well, I'll read an excerpt, it's talking about the state and the state of the homelessness. Pretty much, it's kind of a scathing indictment, it says the state has not done so in regards to doing anything. As a result, the state continues to lack comprehensive understanding of its spending to address homelessness, the homeless council is also not creating guidance, et cetera. Anyway, I just want the, this letter from dated February 11th, from Elaine Howell CPA, addressed to the governor, to be included as part of this letter, because I think it's And if you don't have a copy of that, I have a picture on my phone.
With the utilization of using one system to be united, cause every city, you know, the Olympics is happening in LA and I personally heard that they are cleaning house and they were told to move the homeless out of LA to the San Gabriel Valley area. So I wouldn't be surprised if we have an increase of homeless, but it's not fair. And that's why with like a tracking of one system where all agencies can utilize, because the audit, state audit had pointed that out, that we're all using different programs. So if one just jumps from city to city, returns and comes back, there's no tracking. So I wanna make sure that is included on that and with the report of all the, yeah, the progress and everything else, that's a comprehensive.
So I have a motion by Mayor Lopez Viado and a second by Councilman Wu. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Before I vote, Mayor Castellanos, what you were referring to was in the March staff report. I vote no.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Funny, voted no, but it was gonna include all this stuff, but, okay, yes. Mayor, motion passes 3-1.
I have a motion.
Do you have, oh, council request?
Yes.
Councilman Wu?
Yeah, mother may I, okay, I want to request, okay, we send a demand to county to resume the community, okay, the homeless outreach program. It would be very, it was very successful. We got a report from previous chief, they removed, okay, 24, 25 homeless to give them shelter, to give them, okay, service, including the mental health issue in the hospital. So, and as for the family homeless, we have, we find, okay, and housing for them. So this is extremely successful, we got a report, okay? And this in 2018, 17. So but after that, we haven't have any, and we've been requesting. So we can send a council demand to county to resume, okay, and this service, the program led with a mental health service staff with, okay, and the state, okay, union station, and then we can, including the social worker, okay, and the sheriff, and including our hope team, and work together to go to our encampment and to help out those people in our park, in the, okay, and the hillside, okay, or the underpass for the place, okay, to, okay, and help them to find a place off the street. Not move them, but help them off the street. I think it's only way, okay, with that provide the service. I think a lot of people we talked to, they willing to have a service if we have, but currently, West Covina, we don't have the resource. So hopefully with county help, okay, the program and the money we pay them for the Measure H money, so they can do it. So this is a requisite demand, as my mother may I, we send the demand letter for them resume. Okay, another thing, we want to make sure the county don't drop the homeless population into our park. Okay, in 2018, they get caught, okay, and they even admitted to previous city manager Chris Fillion. So we want to demand, make sure, okay, they don't put their, okay, and into our service, we have our enough of problem. So this is my mother may I.
In regards to that, I believe you're talking about the hosting that was with, that was with the task force with LASSA, the union station, the city yard maintenance.
Correct.
I believe in with the sheriff as well.
Right, the sheriff.
So it was a big project and I, and I think I do remember you two years ago speaking to supervisor, board of supervisor Hilda Solis about that, and she just said we didn't have money, funding. But it's a great, I'd like a push for that, because when we all worked together, we, they provided the services that was needed, they got people off the streets and they got the areas cleaned. So I would second that.
Yeah, we don't have to do it, okay, quarterly, possible, maybe every, at least six months. So to help out, okay, and if we can do quarter, even better, but I don't think they will need to do it. So, but if we can do it, okay, timely matters, okay, at least six months semiannually, okay, to do this, that is really working, okay? This one program, I really think it worked to help the homeless, but they stopped, they don't do it. They did it only two times, okay? Okay, after Major H, okay, approved, okay, and starting the first time and then the second time, then never. So hopefully, with our demand, they can come back and with our city staff and to help our homeless population in our neighborhood. Okay, so you have first and second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Lopez Viado to demand that the county put together their homeless outreach task force to work with social workers.
It's not to put together, cause it's already set up.
Already there.
It's just for them to.
Come to our city with our.
Continue that program, because I don't think, we've had that for a long time and like you mentioned, it was effective when we had that a few years ago.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Before I vote, just wanna make clear, since that time Boise versus Martin was settled, which changed the ability for moving people and the Judge Carter settlement in Orange County, which requires 60% of your point of time count before you can, you know, move people who refuse services. So because the law has changed, I'm gonna vote no on.
Well, the ironic part, I like to also, LA is currently doing that right now. They are cleaning up everything and moving and like I said, nobody knows where it's occurring, but it's happening. LA is doing that right now.
You are correct, and the city of LA with Men Central Jail, there's a Sears Tower in East Los Angeles that is gonna be used as a shelter. So they are moving forward with creating the 60% beds in order to do this. Again, as a city, if we don't have the 60% of beds, then when the homeless do get placed here in the San Gabriel Valley, as you're saying, we will not legally have the ability to move anybody in that.
Well, that's why, okay, I get it, that's okay. You can, that's, that's fine, you can vote no, but this is the request we'd like to see. Like we said, we want clean, beautiful and a safe city. So we'd like to have county continue that program that we're currently doing right now, but, go ahead.
Okay, I vote yes, okay, but, okay, we help the people willing to get help. We don't force people to do anything. So we over there, okay, and I got a report, they helped 20 some people only, but they have, they approached maybe 100 people, some of people still want to stay there. So we not force people to move, we help the people willing to get help. We want to help them to find a shelter. I thought a lot of people willing to get help, so it's not like we force people move them out. No, we provide a service with county service because we have no resource. So we less county service, we less mental health service, so we can provide, okay, assistance to those people willing to get help. And then I met one homeless lady in the South Side and she asked me, so can I get a help? Okay, I have, my leg kind of wound is not closing, okay? I said, right away, I called the city, city manager, help me, and with my Chris, my Chris right away called, okay, a union station to help this lady to out of Friendship Park. So, okay, it just needs action, okay, for people willing to get help. So we not here to force people, we here to provide service and with county have more service, that's what this is about. So, yes.
Mayor Protim Castellanos? Mayor Lopez Viado?
I have one more thing to say, just because it's just very passionate. The homeless situation, as I mentioned before, we want to help those who want to get help, but we have also seen people who don't want to take the services. I've seen a homeless person been offered services for many years and refuses and still is on the street after 10 years. That being said, we do, I don't know if people remembered, when I was just a community senior service commissioner, before I became a councilwoman, there was a gentleman on the bus stop and people, residents still know, I mean, I did post it with permission and everything and he refused services, but we finally got him help. He was actually put mandatory, put in a psychiatric, cause I visit him at the USC with all, it was, it was an experience, definitely. But they would not let him be released until he has a place to stay. Fortunately, now he actually resides here in West Covina in a special home. It's not like a shelter, but is a specialized home. And he is here and we wanna be able to do all that. But that being said, I'd like to be able to accomplish both those who want the help and those who don't want the help. That being said, my vote is yes, it passes 3-1. Thank you. Onto the next. Any city council comments? Seeing none. This concludes our meeting and have a good night. Adjourned.